Thank you. They'll just, he'll just call up in the regular meeting and then just call up after executive session says reconvene and take any action, so he just needs to.
Okay. All right. Okay, we reconvene from our executive session, and at this time, we have some action to be taken, and I'd entertain a motion on the 380 agreement for our AK real estate.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, I make a motion that we move the commitments, the commencement date of construction in the agreement to March 31st, 2024, and I would also make a motion that we move the hotel phase two date to June 30th of 2024, and aside from that, that we authorize you, Mayor, to execute the amended document.
Realty Capital.
And it's Realty Capital.
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Got your vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? It's unanimous. Okay, at this time, I call the meeting to order, stand for the implication, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance and Texas pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we just pray this evening for your love and compassion, and that it flow through us, and that it flow through us to our community. And Lord, we pray that we are able to keep our eyes open, see those that are in need, and be able to apply that need in such a way to show your love. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we have a proclamation supporting 2023 World Teachers Day, October 5th. Mr. Garber.
Yes, sir. The proclamation is as follows: Corinth's future strength depends on providing a high-quality education to all students, and whereas teacher quality matters more to student achievement than any other school-related factor. And teachers spend countless hours preparing lesson plans and supporting students, and our Lake Dallas and Denton ISD teachers have demonstrated great resilience, adaptability, and creativity during the COVID-19 crisis. And whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community, and #teacherscan is a statewide movement supported by more than 150 partnering businesses and organizations committed to elevating the teaching profession and honoring the critical role teachers play in the success of Texas. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Corinth, City Council joins the #teacherscan and its partnering entities across Texas in celebrating World Teachers Day, and proclaims that October 5th of 2023 is to be Lake Dallas ISD and Denton ISD's Teachers Day. And be it further resolved that the City of Corinth, City Council encourages members of our community to personally express appreciation to our teachers and display a light blue ribbon outside of our homes and businesses the week of October 5th as a symbol of our support for our educators. Sign this the 21st day of September 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. Citizens' comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments about any of the council agenda items are appreciated by the council and may be taken into consideration at this time or during that agenda item. Council is prohibited from acting on or discussing items brought before them at this time. Do we have any?
Consent.
Okay. Consent agenda. I entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mayor, a move that we approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Got your vote. Very good. Okay, item number six. Conduct a public hearing to consider testimony and consider an act on the ordinance amending Section 2 zoning regulations, Section 3 subdivision regulations, Section 4 sign and fence screening regulations, and Section 5 definition of the city's Unified Development Code, case number ZTA 23-0002-UDC amendments. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our Director of Development Services, John Webb, will present this item. Answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We've gone over this a couple of times in some previous work sessions, so just want to again tonight as a formal action. It has gone to the Planning, Zoning Commission of Public Hearing, and you have a recommendation for approval of these amendments. As I mentioned before, a lot of these are just kind of housekeeping amendments where definition numbers needed to be changed back to alphabetical order. We did point out there are some key things where we want to make sure we don't keep religious facilities out of certain parts of the city. We felt that was necessary to allow a broader allowance for that use in the city. There was this kind of odd issue where banks had to be in a freestanding building. Though markets now where banks are in much smaller type facilities, and they can easily operate as an end cap in the shopping center. We wanted to amend the parking requirements for restaurants based upon the size of the business, and that's kind of the current industry standard on that. Yeah. In the ordinance, we talk about where we encourage, we're in developers looking at doing a rezoning project to meet with the neighborhood. The ordinance today says that that meeting shall occur seven days before a P&amp;Z meeting. That's not enough time. We'd like to have those meetings between the developer and the neighborhood well in advance where we advertise the neighborhood, advertise the public hearing so we can make, you know, changes as necessary. We are recommending some changes to our sign ordinance. Right now, there's very little regulation on these large inflatable balloon signs. We feel that they are, it's part of the necessary introduction when a business opens. There ought to be some type of splash and allowance for some extra signage above and beyond our base sign districts, but we do think there's probably a reasonable amount of time that those signs should be there, and that would be for a business opening. As we talked about in the work session, should a business have a special event, they are welcome to come and get a special event permit, and probably we can address signage at that We talked about off-premise signs. As we talked about a few weeks ago, there was a Supreme Court ruling that limits the cities from regulating the content of signs, and so in the past, or if we currently have, we allow two types of off-premise signs, and that being these builder bandit signs that direct prospective home buyers to new subdivisions for the builder, for them to draw attention to their signage. And we also allow weekend garage sale signs. We believe that this is just adding more clutter to the city. As you know, we've achieved gold status on our scenic city, part in fact that we have a good landscape ordinance, tree preservation ordinance, and a sign ordinance. We think with this, just removing all off-premise signs, that this could even raise our status with the scenic city. It's just a matter of clutter. As I mentioned in the workshop, in my previous cities I worked with, did not allow any type of off-premise signs, and the garage sales happened on the weekends, people promoted them through the next door. You can certainly have a sign in your yard. This doesn't prohibit the HOA from promoting garage sales and putting signs on HOA property, but we feel, again, this is just one more step that Corinth can take to kind of remove the visual clutter that we see on the weekends. We do want to continue to allow people to have the residential signs in their yards, if it could be a for-sale sign, or, you know, somebody's, you know, has a birthday. There was an item brought up about what happens if, you know, somebody wants to have the signs rented out, and you've got the 200 flamingos in the front yard. You know, that's going to happen on the weekend. Those are companies that put in the signs, and they're going to take them out. It's not that we're going to go out and patrol the streets of Corinth over the weekend and, you know, prohibit people from, you know, celebrating events, you know, on the weekend. So with that, the city is applicant, be glad to answer any questions. Again, you have a recommendation for approval by the Planning, Zoning Commission.
Are there any questions? Counsel?
I do know. I asked John about this, and he told me to bring it up, or that I could bring it up. I have a couple. The inflatable signs, I would like to change that verbiage because, like we talked about last week, if a company does something big and new, and I used Harley-Davidson as an example, and they want to do an inflatable sign, then I think they should be allowed to, even though they're not a new business. And maybe we could change it to just say they could do two weeks a year, or one week a year, or something like that, but I would, I really think that, that that would, would hurt some of our businesses whenever they have these big events and they do big things, and they want to draw crowds, you know, like Huffins and their car show and different things like that. I just think we should allow some. We don't have to do it every week, but maybe, like I said, two a week, or something like that. So I don't know how we vote on this if we want to change that. I guess it's according to how everybody else feels. And then my other one was the weekend signs. A lot of people, like people that have estate sales, that's their livelihood, and a lot of people go to those, and I feel like that if we take that away, it's going to hurt them. I mean, it's just on the weekend, and I know that might sound like I'm redneck or something, but it's just, it's not trashy, it's just, that's what they depend on a lot, and I just feel like that I'd like to not put that in there. That's my two things.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, I think what I was hearing John say is that we're not going to strictly enforce it, we just want to be able to, because we can't be content, because we have to be content neutral. We have to, if we don't, if we allow it, we have to allow basically anything on, you know, and it may not be an estate sale sign. And I think it's kind of like when we dealt with the golf carts, you know, instead of making it authorized, we just didn't do anything and kind of directed enforcement to be consistent with common sense and practice, and I think it'll be dealt with better that way. I mean, my wife loves to go to estate sales, and I don't hear staff saying, we're not going to have estate sale signs, or even for-sale signs, but if we have an abuser or something like that, we want to be able to prevent them from taking advantage of the lack of regulation or some permissive use. And then on the inflatables, I guess what I hear you saying is you think it'd be good for business owners to have some ability to do that by right. Would it, and this is kind of a question to you, John, would it, could we, in our, would it be part of the special use ordinance that they would, we could incorporate some time period like that?
Probably not. I mean, I mean, if they had a true special event where there's a crowd gathering, but it's a lot of times, if you want to go that route, then I think you would need to amend the ordinance to, they say that you could have it two weeks out of the year and let you pick what the two weeks are, but not restrain it to a grand opening or a CO, that businesses are allowed to have inflatable signs no more than two consecutive weeks a year.
And we want to include something, and I don't want to be the draftsman, where they have to notify the city that they're doing it?
They need to get a permit.
So they could, they would still be required to get a permit to do it, but they could have up to two weeks? Okay, I don't have any problem with that.
Does it have to be consecutive? What if they do something one week and something another week? And that's two weeks a year? I mean, I don't know. I'm just thinking about these businesses, and when they have those big events, how did that helps them draw people?
Well, I think giving them up to two weeks is pretty generous. Again, I can only go by work, my history as a planner that, you know, had very successful cities and businesses that operated very well without the balloons, so I think we're still given an inception that's not seen elsewhere.
Didn't we discuss allowing this through a special events?
If, we talked about, let's just, for example, if Harley wanted to have a large event where we knew that they were going to draw, you know, quite a crowd, and it met our special event ordinance, I think there's a way they could go through that, but if it's just that, you know, a car dealership wants to have an antique car show one weekend, that really doesn't constitute a true special event, it's just they're having antique cars out. So the question is, do you feel that that is worthy of having a balloon, you know, for that?
Well, what I'm suggesting is, is I'm okay with this ordinance written the way that it is. Is it possible for us to look at the special events ordinance?
Yes.
Since if they want a balloon, they're going to have to get a permit anyway. Like, we probably can deal with a lot of this stuff through the special events, maybe redefine some sections, we can outline some timelines, but that way, our sign ordinance stays pure and easy. We just don't allow off-premises signs.
Okay, so I'm looking at the actual language in the ordinance that John and I are very familiar with. So in subsection F duration, it's section 4.01.18 for the temporary signs. Duration currently says an inflatable sign should only be displayed a maximum of two consecutive weeks within the eight-week period after the business obtains a CO. So if you're wanting to, a couple of things, if you're wanting to say, this is a standard, but you're going to allow some exception in another ordinance, and we need to say unless it's allowed under the special events, as part of a special events permit, and then we handle it in that ordinance. I don't want to have something that we say you absolutely can't have it, and then we adopt a special event ordinance that says, yes, you can have it. So I just want the two to tie together. And if you're talking about just limiting it to two weeks and taking away the CO, then it's either two, it just says an inflatable sign should only be displayed a maximum of two consecutive weeks, or it's, it should only be displayed two weeks, you know, it's always going to have to be like on the same site, at the same, at the same location. I mean, I'm just trying to kind of figure out, I need some direction, and then we can, we can make a motion to amend the ordinance and just change the language now.
So Tina, would, do you think it would work to accomplish what you're wanting to accomplish, which I think is a worthy objective, if we approved this ordinance and then directed them to craft something in the special use ordinance that would allow, I'm sorry, special event ordinance that would allow a couple of weeks a year? And then we, and then when we do that, once we get that to where we like it, then we'll amend this section, because what I'm concerned about is if we amend this section to reference the other section right now, and we never go back and add it, we will have created a lot of confusion about it being permitted possibly when you don't have the language there. Does that make sense?
It does, but what if we? It does make sense, but what if, okay, so we do it that way, but then we never go back and amend this? Because this verbiage has, so why couldn't you just change the verbiage to say something about having to get, go to special events?
We could also just do a general and say except as otherwise allowed by ordinance.
Let's do that.
And not that we adopt any ordinances, then we don't have to fix this.
I like that.
So what I'm hearing is we will let them have the two weeks a year with the special ordinance, but then we're going to remove the allowance of off-premises signs?
Yeah, but we're not going to do this special event thing tonight, so we don't, we're, I think what I'm, what I'm suggesting is we direct staff to work on that exception. They're going to bring that back to us. I'm in favor of it, but that way, we're not drafting an ordinance from the DICE, which generally doesn't turn out well.
So is the consensus to remove the tie to the CO, or just leave it as it is and identify except as otherwise allowed?
Water.
Okay. To just, so it would basically say, as it says now, subsection F, an inflatable sign shall only be displayed a maximum of two consecutive weeks within the eight-week period after the business obtains a certificate of occupancy, except as otherwise allowed by ordinance. And that would allow, staff would need to bring back the other special event ordinance to address those specific circumstances for a permit intent.
Yeah, if, Mayor, if I could, could I adopt that as my motion? And then we can have further discussion if we want to.
We have to have a public hearing.
See, that's why you're in charge.
Are you, are you, can, you okay with that, Tina?
No, I'm not, but that's okay. I'm one out of four, so. I'm not okay with removing the off-premises signs for the estate sales and things like that. I mean, and I know we can't do one without the other. In other words, I can't, if I say I approve, then I approve everything.
Any other questions or discussion items? If not, open it up for public hearing. Anybody in the audience, or one audience? Do you want to speak to this? No? Okay. And we're closing the public hearing? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on that item.
Mayor, I would move to approve ordinance number 21-09-021-37, amending Section 2 zoning regulations, Section 3 subdivision regulations, Section 4 sign and fence screening regulations, and Section 5 definitions of city unified development code, with the changes to the section described by the city attorney, making an exception, or clarifying that the restriction on inflatables can be altered by other provisions in the city ordinances.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Got your vote. It passes. Business agenda. Consider an act on an ordinance adopting a budget and annual program of services in the first year of the capital improvement plan and appropriating resources for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024, for the City of Corinth, and providing an effective date. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is the, is the ordinance that actually approves the budget, as we have discussed for the last several meetings. We had workshops on August 3rd, August 17th, and September 7th, and the only change in this document from our last discussion, as you see in your staff report, is the addition of two school resource officers that is part of a program with the Lake Dallas ISD, where they have agreed to pay for the salaries for both of those officers for three years, at which time we will revisit it and talk about the percentages then. So you're seeing that expense for $254,000 added to this budget, as well as a revenue item for their contribution, and a little bit of money to the tune of $26,000 coming from the Crime Control District to cover some of the onboarding costs for those two officers. But that is the only change from the last discussion we had, and we can answer any specific questions that you have.
Are there any questions from counsel? If not, entertain a motion on that item.
May I make a motion to approve an ordinance adopting the budget in the first year of the capital improvement plan and appropriating resources for the budget year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024, for the City of Corinth.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Got your vote.
This is a record vote. This is to be a record vote. Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Garber?
Yes.
Mr. Hulsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
It's unanimous. Item number eight. Consider an act on an ordinance approving the 2023 tax rolls and accepting the anticipated collection rate of 100% for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the required ordinance to approve the actual tax rule. As you know, the certified appraisal rule came in at $3,372,861,423. This also approves the collection rate of 100%, as you see in the ordinance. I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions, counsel? I entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the ordinance accepting the 2023 tax rule and to accept the submission of the certified collection rate of 100% for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024.
I'll second.
Is this a roll call?
No, this one.
Okay. I'll, cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item number nine. Consider an act on the ordinance levying and adopting tax rate for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You had the public hearing for the tax rate adopt, I'm sorry, for the tax rate on September 7th, and this is the ordinance actually adopting the rate, and as Leanne described at that time, we are recommending a rate for our M&amp;O portion of our tax rate of .3840, or 38, 38.4 cents per $100 of assessed value, and a debt service rate of 13.6 cents per $100 of assessed value, for a total tax rate of 52 cents, that would equal a tax levy of And I do have to mention on the motion, you will see this references a tax increase, that is the language that's required by the state. We are actually recommending a decrease in the tax rate of about 2 cents. Answer any questions that you may have.
Any question, counsel? Not, I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I would move to approve the ordinance accept, oh, gosh. I move to approve the property tax rate being increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .052 cents per $100 of evaluation, which is effectively a 9.96% increase in the tax rate.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
This is a roll call, I'm sorry. This one and the next one are roll call.
Okay.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Garber?
Yes.
Mr. Hulsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Item number 10. Consider an act to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the city budget and the annual program of services for fiscal year 2023-2024. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Texas Local Government Code does require if, if we are adopting a budget that results in more property tax collections than we had the year before, that it requires a separate vote. So we are asking tonight for your consideration to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the budget. Answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any question, counsel? I'd entertain a motion on this item.
I move to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2023-2024.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Garber?
Yes.
Mr. Hulsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Consider an act on the resolution approving a compensation plan for employees adopting pay schedules for public works, general government, police, and fire, and providing for an effective date. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This resolution reflects the discussion we had during our budget workshops relative to the compensation plan. For our public works and general governmental pay schedule, we are including in this budget a 3% cost of living adjustment. And for our public safety, I know we talked a lot about that at the time, this, very quickly, I know there's a lot to this. We basically made a recommendation that the progression for our public safety pay plan that we were unable to allow to occur last year due to some funding restrictions that we had at the time, that we do that as part of this budget, that they would also get their normal 3% progression, natural progression, and for the upcoming fiscal year. And we've also made, for the remaining steps, some increases to adjust some market for police and fire that would raise their starting pay to $65,000 for new police and firefighter. I know we talked about this in length in our budget workshops. workshops, and all of this compensation plan is at a cost of about $1.2 million. About $941,000 of that is specific to public safety. So I know we talked a lot about that, but we'll answer any questions that you have.
Any question, council? I'd entertain a motion on that item.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 23-09-21-15, approving a compensation plan for its employees adopting pay schedules for public works, general government, police, and fire, and providing it for an effective date of September 25, 2023.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Catch your vote. It's unanimous. Item 12, consider an act on an annual appointment, resignation, and removal of board and commission members for all city boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I think you have before you a sheet that depicts the discussions that we've had so far. We've had interviews for our board and commission vacancies, and these would take place, I think their term would actually start on October 1. And I think we've had plenty of discussion about this, but we'll answer any questions that you have. And I think, city attorney, you recommended that they actually read the names for the appointments.
Yes, please.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion on that item.
Mayor, I'll take a shot. With regard to the appointments to economic development, place one Andrea Brainerd, place three Randy Clark, Nicholas Cochrane, place five Ashley Engel, place seven, and place six Michael Lane. With regard to the proposed appointments to planning and zoning, place one Katie Beth Brovert, and I apologize to Katie Beth for the name, place three Rebecca Rule, place five Adam Guck, place seven Chris Smith. With regard to Board of Adjustments and Board of Construction Appeals, place five Lindsay Rail. With regard to Keep Corinth Beautiful in the Parks Board, which had been consolidated, place one Molly Thornton, place three Eric Shadig, place nine Carolyn Wayward. With regard to Finance and Audit Committee, I nominate myself, which I think is a permanent position from the council, and place five Jared Utzer, Utzler.
I'll second those nominations.
Any further discussion? Catch your vote. It's unanimous. Item number 13, consider an act on an ordinance of the city council of the city of Corinth, Texas, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Corinth and the Lake City's Chamber of Commerce for the payment and the use of hotel tax revenue. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is similar to an agreement we have done in the past, where we take $5,000 of our hotel motel revenue and give that to the Chamber of Commerce so that, to help them promote and advertise for their bike rally event.
Any question? I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the agreement with Lake City's Chamber of Commerce authorizing the use of the hotel occupancy tax in the amount of $5,000.
Second.
Any further discussion? Catch your vote. It passes. Item number 14. We'll get Mrs. Henderson back in. Okay, item number 14, consider an act on the execution of the First Amendment to the unimproved property contract with Mansfield Multi-Family Land LLC for the purchase of 6.04 acres for a multifamily development, and authorize a mayor and his designated to execute the necessary documents. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, we have a purchase and sale agreement in place right now with this group, and it currently says that they will close on the property at the end of September, and they are simply asking for an adjustment to change that date to December 15, 2023. They do plan to move forward and purchase for phase two of their project. Phase one, they have already purchased and reimbursed the city. That phase one is actually in the site plan process, and as soon as they get done with that, all indications, they will then move forward and buy the second piece as part of our agreement and move forward with their site plan on that phase as well.
Are there any questions? I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Catch your vote. It's unanimous. Consider, consider an act on the authorizing the city manager to negotiate a professional service agreement with Tyler Technologies for a permitting software program and related implementation services for an amount not to exceed $350,000 and to execute the necessary documents. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is some software that we discussed for our permitting procedures during the budget process, and I'm going to let, I think, John, are you going to cover this? Or Leanne, I think, is going to cover this item tonight. Answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As we discussed during the budget workshop, we were having some issues with the planning software, non-responsive from our vendors. The, the company has been sold five times since we actually implemented the system. Also, the system is just no longer meeting the planning department's needs. When we originally discussed it with the council, we said we had set aside about $200,000 for the software. After going through the pricing with the vendor and looking to make sure that we were successful in allocating enough training time and allowing the vendor to do more of the work than our staff, since the planning department has a lot of work right now, and as far as the day-to-day task adding on a conversion would, would be a bit overwhelming, so we did add additional dollars for that. To come up with the extra $150,000, I want to just briefly go over where we found some savings. So also, I think it was right after the city manager began in October, we talked about some facility enhancements for some, for security, and we had allocated about, I can't remember the amount, but quite a bit of money for that. That all came in substantially lower than what we had estimated at the time. We ended up with a little over $100,000 worth of savings from that project that we were able to move to this. The additional amount, and again, during the budget workshop, we talked about allocating some money to move some of the financial software up to a cloud-based instead of being hosted on premise. And after having internal discussions, we all concurred and agreed that the priority needed to be on the planning software, because it is having also a negative impact on the finance department as far as transactions not coming through, and is requiring a lot more time for us to review and make sure that everything is in balance. So we did move a good, the rest of the monies from the financial projects to this, so that we can move forward with this. We do have, we're working on the agreement. We plan on sending it to legal for review, and once it reviewed, what we're asking for is that the city manager be allowed to negotiate that contract, so that we can move forward as quickly as possible.
Is there any question from council? Thank you very much. I'd entertain a motion on that.
Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to negotiate a professional services agreement with Tyler Technologies for a permitting software program and related implementation services for an amount not to exceed $350,000.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Catch your vote. It's unanimous. Consider an act on nominating up to five individuals to serve on the Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors to serve a one-year term ending on December 31, 2024. Mr. Campbell.
Mayor and council, this is, as the mayor just stated, an opportunity to nominate members to the DCAD board if you choose to do so. You can nominate up to five. I put in your staff report, there's been a little bit of change of composition on that board that we've described in your packet due to some legislation that passed in this last session. But each taxing entity can still nominate up to five members to that board, which has now turned into a nine-member board. The remaining members are, three are elected by the citizens, and then one is actually the addition of the chief appraiser himself. But, so those are some of the changes to the board. But we, as a taxing entity, can still nominate up to five members to that board. I have not received any names. We did have a thought internally, just something to consider. We only get 29 votes, I think, of the 5,000 that are cast, so there's going to be other entities that really can affect this thing. And we can make no nominations if that's throughout, you want to go, and then just vote when it comes time to vote in December. We do have a member of our current audit committee, Jared Utzler, who you actually appointed to a board tonight, that we, on the staff level, thought might be a logical choice with his background. And Leanne reached out to him, and he indicated he'd be willing to do that if, if we wanted to nominate him. Again, we only have 29 votes out of 5,000, so.
Is that countywide?
That's correct. That's, yeah, of all the taxing entities, that's correct. So the school districts, as you can imagine, have a pretty healthy sway in this thing when the votes actually occur, so.
So you need a motion to appoint him, or just a motion to nominate him?
Yes, just to nominate. That's correct.
I'll entertain a motion on that item.
Mayor, I'd like to throw Jared Utzler's name into that hat as a nomination, please.
Second.
Any further discussion? Catch your vote. It's unanimous. Consider an act on the architectural standards component of the site plan for the development of approximately 13 acres located on the southwest corner of Corinth Parkway and I-35 East Service Road, consisting of 312 multifamily units, limited ground floor retail, and related amenities. Applicant Tate Baum on behalf of the property owner of RCM Corinth Land LLC. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I think after some discussion, our recommendation tonight is that you table this item to the October 19 council meeting for further consideration.
Okay. Council agree?
Yes.
Okay, we'll table that item. Okay, council comments and future agenda items. The purpose of this section is to allow each council member the opportunity to provide general updates and/or comments to fellow council members, the public, and our staff on any issue or future events. Also, in accordance with section 30.085 of the Code of Ordinances, at this time, any council member may direct then an item be added as a business item to any future agenda. Mr. Burke?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Garber?
Nothing, sir, thank you.
Mr. Hulsworth?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Mrs. Henderson?
I just want to say that we just finished our restaurant week at the Lake City's Chamber. It was a really big success, and we did a contest where people sent in their receipts, and over 80% of the people were not chamber members, they were just citizens. But our number one restaurant that had the most that came in was a Corinth restaurant, A Bide of Lau and Thai. So I thought that was really good, and our restaurants have, were really excited about it and really seemed to help them. So, and when I came up with this idea, I actually went to Elise, and she helped get it off the ground, and then Elma helped. So Corinth was really big in helping getting that going. So I just want to say thanks to everyone.
Congratulations. Mr. Campbell.
Mayor, the only thing I would say tonight is this is John Webb's last council meeting, I think. So just wanted to thank John for, and I sure have enjoyed working with you for this short time, and we wish you the best of luck and appreciate everything you've done for this city, which is a lot. So thank you.
I express the same thoughts, John. I'm going to miss seeing you sitting over there at council meetings, and, but I might see you at McDonald's hamburger stand sometime, okay? Wish you the best. Have a great evening. We're adjourned.